Pledge your City Council, 8th May 2006. Would you join Councilmember Lord in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Praise your heads please. Heavenly Father, we praise you for your presence and we ask for your wisdom in helping us make decisions for our city. And thank you for our talented staff and continue to give them patience and endurance in meeting the challenges of our growing city. And please, your protective hand over our fire and police as well as the troops serving all over the world. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
All council members are in attendance. Quick note, several items were moved from the consent agenda prior to the meeting. For the convenience of the public, we have renumbered the items in the order that will be presented on the agenda and copies of the changed agenda are available. Okay. As for acceptance of the draft minutes, the regular meeting is held on 24 April. Any changes? Seeing none, those minutes are accepted for filing. We have no expenditures to ratify. We're now to communication. I'd like to start with any council member, let's start with the council members, wish to make a comment, commendation, or presentation. Would anyone in the public, Councilmember Holland, did you?
I wanted to report on the car.
Okay. Well, good, great. And anyone from the public who wants to make a comment? Staff? Seeing none. Now move to council members' reports on current events. Councilmember Lord?
Well, Holly Childs and I have been attending a number of events in the last month. We're kind of the duo together. And we attended a social evening of networking with the GPEC last week where the conversation centered around international business. And I know I've spoken to the group before about the new campaign on global economy in helping economic development bring foreign countries' businesses to our area. Particularly Goodyear is, we're looking for Goodyear to be a destination for some of these companies. GPEC has officially opened up an office in England, which will make it beneficial to all of us. It'll be easier contacting businesses from that area and showing them what we have to offer here in the West Valley. Also, we're working in the Far East. The office has not opened yet, but we have a company looking in Goodyear to bring their business here, and that's looking promising. And also, if you've seen in the paper, Calgary and Canada, they're looking to bring their business here in the West Valley or in the Phoenix area. And I just bring this up because I just want you to be aware that GPEC is definitely working hard for us. They approached us on the development of our airport and wanting us to get busy on seeing what our plan is, and so we are looking into that. Right, Brian?
Yes.
And we're going to try to pursue that. So, I just wanted to know, the West Valley is just on the cusp of a lot of successful businesses coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holland?
There were three of us, council people, Councilmember Cavalier, Councilmember Scott, and myself. We attended the workforce and affordable housing, April 27 through the 29th, in Tempe. We, of course, received much information, it's almost overwhelming what's out there, many statistics, housing trends and changes that are going on in the country and in Arizona and here in the West Valley. The immigrant populations are very important to what's going on, and we learned some new words as well. One of them is economical sustainability. This means that not just finding affordable housing for the people that live in our communities, but also being able to keep them in the housing because prices are rising. And because the prices are rising, it's changing the economic ability of the people to stay in their homes. And what they're finding is that many of them have to give up these homes after they've fought so hard to get into them. The situations are changing monthly and yearly. So, they gave us a great deal of information to think about, and we are definitely going to continue seeking information on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
As Councilmember Holland said, I attended that with the other two council people, and there was a lot to be learned. I proposed an idea where we would have a professional part of our community for people who couldn't afford to get into homes, such as maybe firefighters, policemen starting out, schoolteachers and so forth. Asked if that had been done elsewhere, and I was told yes, it had been. So, this is something we might want to look at, and we probably also will have access to other areas that have done the same thing. Prior to going to that workforce housing, the mayor and Dave Liewansky and Fred Scott attended the brownfield, which was also very informative. And what we learned there is besides Dave presented our problem with brownfield, namely the crane project, and we learned that there may very well be significant dollars available from the government to help us look at other possible brownfield areas out here. So, we're looking into that grant application, and it was just informative, a few days of conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I was the third council member who took part in the workforce affordable housing conference. The afternoon, or the past day, I attended the workforce housing section and found that, actually in Arizona, not much has been done in that area, workforce housing. It's very dominant in about 14 states, but here in Arizona, it hasn't quite been bought off. The developers mostly are not completely sold on it, for one thing. I think it's an education process more than anything else that needs to go to these people. They're talking about integrating these people within some of the present developments that are being built. And I know that for some people, that appears to be a scary issue, but it really is not. And it has to do, as Councilwoman Brenda Holland mentioned, it has to do with sustainability. The whole thing is sustainability. Because if you have development where you have schools and you have hospitals and you have houses that sell for less than $400,000 or $500,000, you're going to have problems. The problems are going to come up very soon if you don't find someplace in, sandwiched in between these expensive homes, some affordable type housing. And it doesn't have to be lower class housing, it has to be housing that these people can afford. And in most areas back east where this is taking place, you can't tell one house from the other. It's all the same. But for some reason here, it's kind of a scary process for the developers. And I think it's something we need to look into for the future. I don't think we need to jump into it right now, but for the future, we better plan on it. And so, it's something for everyone to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we have updates on the manager on council-related matters?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council have a couple of items. What is, is I wanted to talk about the American Public Works Association held their regional meeting here last week, and Jim Nichols is our delegate for that for the state of Arizona. But it involves states, Texas, Oklahoma, New Mexico, Arizona. The group really looks at public works issues as far as affecting the industry, things like that. But it was a great opportunity to showcase the community. And they had tours, they were very impressed with the design of the community, and they just went on and on. In fact, did receive an email where it said that a new standard has been set. Jim Nichols was an outstanding host, excellent representative of the Arizona chapter, said all that attended delegate meetings in the past have never felt more important or appreciated. And Mayor, they also acknowledged you're taking the time to meet with them too at the very early part, and they love Bella Luna.
Great.
The other item I had was the building permits in April, while we've talked about them off and on. The permit level was actually at 321 in April, which is one of our higher months. It's right up there with some of the top months for issuing residential building permits. Stay tuned, we always provide trends to council, and you'll be seeing that as we stay on top of that. Last item is, just as a reminder and also for the public, we have work session next Monday. That starts at 5:00 PM. Three items will be on that. We have the Maricopa County Request for Capital Campaign for the Human Services Campus. Council will also discuss and provide staff direction on community services, special event funding requests. And then the last item on the work session is discussion again on the fiscal year '06-'07 budget, so that'll be presented to council for discussion purposes. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any update on legislative matters?
Not at this time.
Okay. Brian, I apologize for not warning you, but normally we'd cover this at the end of the meeting, and 90% of the people here won't be here at the end of the meeting. Can you give us an explanation of the zippiest city thing that's in the paper?
Mayor, I'd be happy to. As a matter of fact, I had it as one of the discussion points, but Goodyear, our 85338 zip code was rated as one of the eight zippiest areas in the United States. Now, this was an article that was in the Arizona Republic, we're still following up. There's a little bit of, some details that we're trying to follow up with that actual report. But what it is, a zippy city is considered a, recognized for being hot, that it's, it really talks about individuals that have purchased properties in areas where there's value, where there's a lot of energy, momentum, quality, those types of things. And they're actually looking at, they will be having a, it will be airing at 10:00 PM on May the 15th, HGTV Special Hot Zips. So, apparently, we're going to be getting national attention at 10:00 PM. I was not aware of what HGTV was until today, and I apologize for that, but it's Home and Garden, and I guess it's one of the most watched shows that there is, especially by the other gender in a lot of instances, but all genders specifically. Thank you, Mayor.
So, that's next Monday at 10:50?
That's correct.
Okay. Are they going to do any interview or anything?
Pardon me?
Are they going to interview us at all?
I'm not aware of any interviews going on. Paula was interviewed for the newspaper article that was in the Republic.
You interviewed someone that owns some residences here in Goodyear.
Okay, good. Okay, so looking forward to that.
So, zippy city.
Okay, we'll now move to citizen comments. Any citizen, would any citizen like to make a comment on any subject that is not on this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to the consent agenda and make a comment before we announce the consent. The, in front of the council is the most recent and accurate agenda, so we can follow that for our motions. But what happened was 8B, which was the pre-annexation development agreement for Los Ventanas, and 8E, the ordinance annexing acreage known as Los Ventanas, are moved from the consent agenda and placed on the business agenda, on which there are already one or two items on Los Ventanas. So, we're putting them all together, and I don't know if you're doing it Harvey or whomever, we'll present all three or four at one time. Is that okay? Makes a lot of sense. And then, the old item 8L was the Canyon Trails Town Center Large Retail User. That will be pulled, or actually will be continued until May 22nd, but we're pulling it from the consent and putting it on business. It will be continued on the business for two weeks, but we know there's a citizen who wants to make a comment on it, and a couple others of us have seen something of significance to us, and we wanted to make a comment so that we could at least let the applicant on 22nd May know some of our concerns before he or she gets here. Okay? Just be open on that. So, let's start with the consent agenda, and I'll ask the city clerk to read them by title only, please.
Item 8A, council will consider awarding a construction manager at risk contract in the amount of $159,587 to Paulus Construction Incorporated to provide pre-construction services for the improvement of Van Buren Street from Litchfield Road to Estrella Parkway. Item B, council will consider approving a request from David Agato representing GCEP Goodyear LLC for a Series 12 liquor license for Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar located at 13311 West McDowell. Item C, council will consider approving the dedication of a utility easement to the Arizona Public Service Corporation, which easement is within the Palm Valley City Park and is generally located west of the Indian School Road and Wigwam Boulevard intersection. Item D, council will consider approving a use permit to allow a convenience use, which is Starbucks Drive-Thru on a 1.8 acre parcel and a bank drive-thru on a 1.13 acre parcel, Zone C2, lots nine and 10, in the Parkway Village Commercial Center, generally located at the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Roosevelt Street, subject to sub stipulations. Item E, council will consider approving a use permit to allow convenience use, which is McDonald's Restaurant with drive-thru lanes on a 1.12 acre parcel within the Planned Area Development General Commercial District, generally located along the west side of Estrella Parkway and 1/4 mile north of Van Buren Street in the planned Canyon Trails Plaza Phase II Commercial Center, subject to stipulations. Item F, council will consider approving a use permit to allow convenience use, which is Burger King Restaurant with drive-thru lane on a 0.85 acre lot, generally located at the northwest corner of Indian School and Litchfield Roads in the Palm Valley Village Neighborhood Shopping Center, within Phase IIIA of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development District, subject to stipulations. Item G, council will consider adopting Resolution 061039, supporting a proposed alignment of the South Mountain Freeway along 55th Avenue. Item H, council will consider reappointing Darrell Jern, Terry Wade, and Derek Als to the Board of Adjustment for three-year terms expiring on October 31st, 2009, or until their successors are appointed and qualified. Item two of that item is, council will consider appointing Rob Tibbs and Robert Williams to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring October 31st, 2009, or until their successors are appointed and qualified. Item I, council will consider authorizing staff to initiate the annexation process of 42.52 acres, generally located at the northwest corner of the 183rd Avenue alignment in Yuma Road, known as Mariah 2.
Okay, thank you. So, on the current consent agenda, we have items 8A through 8I. Would anyone in public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, could I have a motion, please?
Motion to move, to accept the consent agenda items 8A through I, as heard by the clerk.
I have a motion from Councilmember Scott, a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay. Yes, sir. Since this has been changed around some, I assume that the letters in our book are not necessarily going to correspond to the new business agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, when the item comes up, would you let us know where we're at in our book so we don't all go fishing through the book for each one?
The mayor has that on his agenda, so I think he can tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe if the staff presenter knows as well, they could also know. That'd be great.
You see that, Mayor, where it says former item?
No.
Oh, it's on each of your all's agenda, I'm sorry. The last section tells you what it originally was.
It says on there, it does. On nine, good.
Oh, okay.
It's on the actual agenda.
In parentheses, it'll say consent item 81.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you, Dean. Okay, we're now to the business part of our agenda, and here's a little change. Okay, the first item is a special use permit for large retail users. Public comment will be asked for here because we know one person wanted to make a comment, and certainly in a position to do so. We did not want to delay him two weeks to be able to make that comment. But the action, the presentation by the staff and the presentation by the applicant, we will await on 22 May. However, in an effort to be fair to the applicant, we want to make sure that thoughts by a couple people on council and by this individual are well-known and recognized by that applicant so that they're prepared for that on the 22nd. Darrell, or?
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, could we have, again, we're talking about, it's basically the big box ordinance, special use permit, and it concerns Canyon Trails. And this has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we received our information from that particular body. They did pass the special use permit, approved that. They did not yet meet on the issue on the architectural, the elevations, that will be later. Would anyone from the public wish to make a comment on this particular application, which is being postponed until 22nd? Mr. Gelsner?
Mayor and council Gary Gelsner, 14971 West Pinshot Avenue in Goodyear, Arizona. A citizen and also a member of the Planning Commission. It is rare that I come before you and have to admit a mistake, and so I'm here tonight to eat a little humble pie and to tell you a little bit about this big box special use permit. Because I was here pleading with you last spring when this was up before a zoning case. So, let me talk to you about the property. You notice the property is here on the proposed 303 and Yuma Road. Here's, here's the large, this is the area that the first section of the development is going to be worked on. When the developer brought this before Planning and Zoning Commission and also brought it before council, one of the things that he was talking about was the aesthetics of the project and how crucial it was, there were other competing projects in the area, and that they needed three pylon signs along the 303, proposed 303 expressway. They needed two pylon signs on Yuma Road. They were very concerned about the village area here that they had never built before, but they said, "We know how to do this." And then they asked for all of these concessions from council. And I stood before you, and I said, "Give them these concessions because these people are good developers and we want them here." And they had said, "Well, if we don't get these concessions, we're going to have to move on to a different town, and the town might be to the west of us." And, and again, I said, I asked you, I pleaded with you, and you gave them the concessions. And you gave them three pylon signs when they wanted it. You gave them a large box, you gave them landscaping along the back, you gave them, you didn't make them break up the building, the facade. And they said, "We're going to build really nice stuff for you." And they showed you beautiful drawings that I'm showing you right here, that many of you, some of you have seen in your packet, some of you have seen at the presentation of Planning and Zoning Commission. And they showed you those, and we looked at those elevations at Planning and Zoning Commission, and we said, "This is, this is really good," when we saw this last spring. And we looked again, and they showed us more conceptual elevations. This is what they showed us last week. This is the elevation. Does that look like anything that you've seen before? Does that look like the distinguished shopping center that they asked you for concessions so that they could build here in Goodyear? This is average to mediocre. This is, the architecture that they are proposing is stuff that was built in Roosevelt Field, Long Island, in 1950, which was one of the first shopping centers that was ever developed. The Southdale Shopping Center, an enclosed mall in Minnesota, which was developed in 19, late 1960s, early 70s, the first enclosed mall in the country, was a better-looking mall than what they're proposing here for you. So, again, what I'm saying to you, we made a mistake at Planning Council, Planning Commission, I made a mistake. I should never have voted for it. I did vote for it, and I ask you either send it back to us for more work or to deny it. This is, and if you deny it, then let them sell their land and find a better developer. Because these people, what they're showing you, what the intent that they are showing you, is not up to standards and not what you asked for. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, how this particularly extraordinary way to approach this subject came about was, Mr. Kraus is our Community Development Director, and oftentimes when he knows that there's a difference between PMZ and the applicant, or expects that there could be, he will talk to us as individuals, and he did that this morning to three of us because we were available. And the other four, he's scheduled to talk to, so they haven't heard this presentation yet. But I, I was one who saw it, and I found that there was a dramatic difference between what we were told initially and what is right now on the table. And I'll let the other two gentlemen speak for themselves, I'm just going to say that much about it. I think it's important that the applicant know that those who have seen it are disturbed, and when they come in the 22nd, there should be no surprises. That's all we're trying to do here. Okay? Would anyone else like to make a comment? Councilmember Sousa?
Thank you, mister. You know, this council has been fooled before, and we're not going to be fooled again. And I'm talking about our spring training location several months back. I'm going on record that, from what I've seen, and what is, what is going to do the PMZ Commission, over and above what we originally saw in this council, is a far cry from what you gave us and indicated was going to be built in that property. I just saw this again, and frankly, you know, it's reminiscent of what I saw here, like some barracks that was built in Russia back in the 40s and 50s. And I got to concur with the gentleman that just spoke, that it really is not representative of what we want here in the city of Goodyear. And frankly, I concur with what he said. If you can't develop this the way you promised, then move on, because we don't want you. Thank you, mister.
Vice Mayor?
I was the third person who saw this this morning, and I too feel the same as the mayor and his council, mister. There doesn't need to be more, any more said than that. We worked hard, long and hard for this, and I remember the meetings, the work sessions we went through prior to us approving this, and I think it would be something that I think our citizens would want us to do, and that is, stick with our guns. What we said at the beginning is what it should be, and their changes are just not acceptable.
Thank you, mister. Thank you. Councilmember Lord?
I haven't had my briefing yet, but I certainly have done a lot of reviewing of this, and I took a trip up to 67th this weekend. And is that not a Vestar Development Shopping Center on 67th? You don't think of it? Well, I thought Vestar, because I thought when they briefed us, I asked that question, and they said it was, and I asked, a long time ago, I asked, "Is that what it's going to look like? It's going to have that general look?" And they said yes, and so I guess.
Mayor, Councilmember Lord, are you referring to the shopping center at 67th Avenue and the 101, just south of the 101?
Because I used that as an example when we were in, they were talking to us, I actually used that architecture as an example. I said, "Is that the kind of look that we're going to be getting?"
It's, Mayor, Councilmember Lord, I, I thought that was Kitchell's development, but I may be wrong.
It is. We could use as.
It is a very nice one.
And I also agree with the other council people, and I haven't had my briefing yet, but I do think this needs to be definitely dressed up, and it is a ho-hum looking shopping center.
Okay, thank you. Again, the point here is so that the applicant is not at a disadvantage, but has two weeks actually to think this through, and that's what we'd like to see happen. So, we'll continue this item until, postponed, I guess is the right word, is that right? Hurry, postpone or postpone, until 22 May. Okay? Thank you very much. We'll now move to 9B on the new agenda, and 9C. B is to consider approving a development agreement with Beazer Homes, and item C is to consider rezoning. And item C is to consider rezoning of 256 acres of property from the preliminary planned area development zoning district. Harvey will do 9B and Farhad 9C. Okay, and then I'll ask for motions on both separately, okay?
This is formerly 9D.
This is formerly 9D and 9A. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Harvey?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. This is a development agreement for a 259-acre parcel submitted by Beazer Homes, located at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Camelback, just to the east of Citrus Road, south of Camelback. It's current... It's within the city of Goodyear. As a condition of final PAD approval, which Farhad will brief the mayor and council on in a few minutes, one of the conditions of approval was the approval of a development agreement. And the purpose in the development agreement was to address a few things, primarily fire service, fire station site, and operational and maintenance costs for serving this particular area. In addition to that, utilities as well as road construction. Along with Talavertia Estates, there was a property that's originally been entitled Sadea, which is... Meritage Home is the developer and builder of Sadea. And the council approved a final PAD and a development agreement for Sadea. And with the development agreement with Sadea, they are obligated to dedicate a two-acre fire station site just north of Indian School Road, between Indian School and Camelback in this particular area. And that particular station would serve both Talavertia Estates and Sadea. And Sadea is obligated to pay $1.5 million annually over a five-year period for the operation and maintenance of that fire station. And with this particular development, Talavertia Estates, they will be paying their proportionate share based on the number of lots. The development agreement also addresses the development of roads on Citrus as well as Camelback, payment of their proportionate share of any traffic signals that are required as part of this development. In addition, the development agreement addresses financial contribution to the two school districts that are impacted by this development. The development agreement provides for a vesting of the zoning within 36 months of the applicant receiving a grading permit. The utilities, this particular property is located within the Arizona American Water Service Area, Certificated Area. So water would be provided by Arizona American, not the city. However, it is within the wastewater service area for the city of Goodyear. However, the city does not currently have any sewer lines within the area, and we are negotiating an agreement with Lipsco, Lishfield Park Service Company, to provide wastewater service to Talavertia Estates on an interim basis until such time that the city is able to serve this particular property. And that's part of the development agreement. In exchange, this is a 10-year agreement. And in exchange, one of the considerations for the development agreement was the... Beazer Homes has agreed to comply with the graduated density concept in that Luke Air Force Base espoused during the general, recent general plan discussions. As the council recalls, Luke Air Force Base advocated that particular density concept. As you move away from the base, you would increase in density. And this particular development is impacted or not impacted, but is adjacent to the noise contour lines. So they have agreed to roughly 1.5 dwelling units per acre. And we are appreciative of that, and that would be satisfactory to Luke Air Force Base. That concludes my comments, mayor and council. And now I'll ask Farhad to discuss the final PAD.
Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. Harvey gave you an idea of the vicinity surrounding this site. This is page 23 of the PAD packets before you. And as you can see here, the boundaries of Citrus Road to the west, Camelback to the north. And the eastern boundary roughly follows the 65 LDN line. This proposed development originally came before you in July of last year as a preliminary PAD. It was approved on that day in July. And with some, a few modifications were coming before you with the final PAD proposal. Essentially, the final PAD consists of 256 acres, as Harvey mentioned. 393 lots, and each of these lots are about 110 by 140. So they're fairly large lots, or they're about 15,400 square feet, if you prefer. The open space accounts for 49 acres, or about 20% of this site. There are three active open space areas. And you can see it on this conceptual land use map. They're located... There's one located centrally, another further south, and another to the eastern portion of the site. They will be amenitized. Amongst some of the amenities include basketball courts, volleyball courts, and also picnic room at us as well. The development will consist of generally three phases. Phase one will begin with the model complex located at the extreme southwest corner of the site. Phase two will consist of the remaining lots south of the Collector Road. And phase three will consist of lots to the north of the Collector. And I should say the Collector will connect to Camelback Road during that second phase. As Harvey mentioned, the density is a little over 1.5 units to the acre. And as he also mentioned, it generally complies with the graduated density concept as well as the general plan. Therefore, staff is recommending approval contingent on the 45 stipulations before you. That concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're on 9B and 9C. Do we have any comments from the public? Do we have any comments from the applicant?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Andy Moore. My address is 3101 North Central in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm here on behalf of Beazer Homes, the developer for the property, and also the property owners, the Abel family. Farhad and Harvey both did a wonderful job of covering the facts in front of you. This project has been now from preliminary PAD to final PAD in front of the Planning Commission, both of which times unanimously recommended approval. You, as a council, unanimously recommended approval on the preliminary PAD last summer. The only major change is between that time and this time, there used to be a little tail to this property that came down and sort of finished off that included another five acres. The Abel family thought again about it and decided they'd prefer to just keep that five acres and fold it into the property south of there that will come before you at another time in another case, possibly asking for commercial. I don't know if they've even filed yet. But that was then cut out of the case. And because of that, staff talked to us about making sure that there's a way that... Because that's a remnant parcel that's kind of got preliminary PAD zoning but won't be going anywhere unless it's rezoned, we will be stiff to providing access easement through one of our cul-de-sacs that come down here that could only be abandoned when that property is rezoned. That way, there's certain to be access, and it's not left over with some strange half zoning on it. That's really the big change. Otherwise, as staff have pointed out to you, this property, largely due to some of the limitations put on it by being next to the 65 LDN and the graduated density concept, is going to be very large lots, 15,400 square foot lots. It's going to be a only, you know, total of... The zoning gives a max of 395 lots. As we've come in with the preliminary plat, it turns out it's, you know, actual count of 393. So some of the lots that abut this out parcel here are even deeper, another 30 feet deep, just to protect against whatever may go there. That zoning is still just the agricultural zoning. Those are separate property owners, and they'll be... They're hoping to come forward at a later time as well and see if they can talk to the city about what they'd like to do on the property. We have fortunately had a real good cooperative relationship with our neighbor to the west, Sadea, Meritage's square mile of planned community. And we are working with them not only to together pay for the fire station to the town, facility costs and ONM costs. They will be placing a school on their site. We will be paying the school compact, our voluntary contribution. We are working together in the dedication and improvement of Citrus Road, and that's going forward very quickly. And so it's been good to be able to work with our next-door neighbor as well. We're very excited about this project and think it's going to be a bit of a showcase up in this area. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you very much. Okay, can I ask the clerk... We'll handle 9B first. Can I ask the clerk to read resolution by title only, please?
Resolution number 061040, authorizing a development agreement with Beazer Homes Holdings Corporation, a Delaware corporation regarding the infrastructure development of 256 acres generally located at the southeast corner of Camelback and Citrus Roads within the city of Goodyear and providing for an effective date.
Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2006-1040, as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Suza. Again, we're talking here about the development agreement with Beazer Homes. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Scott?
Just a correction, unless mine is a misprint. How many acres did you say this involved?
256.
256.
I think it's 259.
What was that difference?
There is a misprint.
Just in the subject line, in the subject line recommendation, it says 259.
And the resolution's correct?
Yes.
The resolution's correct. Good point.
Further discussion, Councilmember Antoniak?
Question, Mr. Moore. And this may or may not be best addressed in this one, it may be in the next one. But I knew I was looking for something that was missing in the picture, and it was that five acres down at the bottom that you noted towards the end. Would you... Do we have any stipulations in the application tonight requiring you to notify those owners that are buying on that cul-de-sac that that impact may be a thoroughfare in the future? At least some access to property to the south? I heard you note it in your presentation, and I'm thinking specifically of those... You said one of those two cul-de-sacs to the south. And if I was an owner that bought on that cul-de-sac and five years down the road, another house came in at the end of the cul-de-sac that wanted access, I'd be back up here barking at these seven people, and I don't want that to happen.
Mayor Cavill, Councilmember Antoniak, there is a stiff in the case, the one that requires us to connect with access easement until such time as it resumes. Now, I have to actually look at it.
Already got somebody moving in on your map right now. Notice he was down cul-de-sac, but when I mentioned he moved up towards the northeast.
Let me see if I can find the stiff, and then we'll see if that...
Is the stipulation that it addresses?
Well, I don't know if it addresses notification.
Off on your notification.
And if it doesn't, we can certainly add that. I'd be happy to do that.
Is that best in this portion or the next portion? I'm looking for... This is a development agreement. On the rezon?
I think it's a rezon.
Okay.
Let me see if I can quick answer to that question, then we'll get it out of the way.
I couldn't find it. As you noted, I was stalling, and I couldn't find it, so...
Okay.
If you find it.
It's stipulation 45. Let's see what it says here. "Developer shall dedicate right of way within the final plat from the 178th Lane cul-de-sac on the south side of the project to be used for vehicular access to the approximately five-acre parcel that was approved as part of the preliminary PAD but removed." Yeah, it does not ask for notification. We'd be happy to work with staff on wording for that and add that in.
Which one's 178th Lane?
I believe it's 178th. And one of the reasons we picked that is our model homes will be along here originally, so we'll have a little bit more time to control that area.
Sure.
But we're happy to add that language act.
I may do that during the rezoning then, Andy. Okay. In further... Okay, Vice Mayor Cavill.
No, I'm... Stipulation 43. But over flights from Luke. It's more than just a noise situation in this particular development because... I was out there the other day when an F-16 crashed very near there. And my concern is that, supposing something like that does happen, God forbid, it should happen to crash into one of our homes. But what is the liability the city has that should happen with us approving that? That is a major concern because that crash was very close to this area the other day.
Mayor Cavill, Councilmember Cavill, I'd be happy to address your comments. But as far as the city's liability, perhaps the city attorney might want to answer that portion, and then I can respond to anything else.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's a good question. I know the state standards do allow homes in the areas outside 65 LDN. So under the state statute involving utilization of land in the vicinity of military air force base, this is an allowable use. So there's always... Anybody can sue for anything. I think that's where you start from. But if you researched it, if you complied with the state statute as far as land in the vicinity of air force base, that gives you some defense. But it's certainly something we could research further if that's a question that you need to answer before you move forward on this item.
I just have difficulty voting for this, knowing that it could come back to the city if there was such a thing. I would hate to think that it could happen. As I said the other day, one came very close to it. And that's kind of a wake-up call for me. We have to be careful with this. And I understand what Luke Air Force Base has said to you in the way of the... In the matter of density because of this. And you have provided by their decision, which is good. And I just want to make certain that enough... Maybe we put it this way, enough has to be said in your statement to them, to each buyer, that will give them enough information to really make the decision and they want to take the responsibility of owning a home in that area.
And Mayor and Vice Mayor, we actually agree with that, and so does your staff. Let me first point out specifically what it does say in here and what we have to do for notice. And then I want to talk just policy-wise for a moment on locating things near the 65 LDN. Stipulation 18 of the final PAD begins to talk about a waiver requirement that we have to, the developer has to provide, which runs with the land. So it doesn't matter who owns the house. Everybody who buys it is going to get this requirement. "For the initial homeowner's sign, it shall include the following statements in the waiver agreement. Talavertia Estates is subject to the tenant's noise, abrasions, dust, and all other effects that may be caused by overflights and by the operation of aircraft landing at or taking off from Luke Air Force Base and the Phoenix Goodyear Airport." So already we've said all other effects that could come from any taken off or landing nearby. The second sentence is, "The owner does release and discharge the city of Goodyear and Beazer Homes," thankfully we got in there too, "from any liability for any and all claims for future damages and complaints of any kind to persons or property that may arise at any time in the future from the operation of such aircraft near and over the area." Now, of course, someone will always say, "But I didn't know. My broker told me there wasn't an airport nearby." And so because of that, the city has further required a great deal of notification and documentation. Everyone who signs their public... For their home will not only hear that waiver, they're going to get another map showing them, "You are here, the jet plane is here." There's going to be signs posted within all, according to stiff 20, "All subdivision sales offices identifying the location of Luke Air Force Base, the accident potential zones of 65 LDN, noise contours, departure corridors." And this applies for the Phoenix Goodyear Airport as well. It's going to include a 24 by 36-inch map at the main entrance to the sales facility and has to include the... facility and has to include the proximal location of homes being sold or leased. The public sales report has to provide this. So, so it's going to be hard to miss and they're going to have to sign documents saying, I got it, I see it, I acknowledge it, and I release everyone. So there's a sense in which anyone can always sue anyone for anything, but your city has done a very good job of creating a paper trail and a clear documentation, a clear warning that if you want to live here, you're taking on the consequences and in fact you're signing it away. Now, having said that, it's still difficult to see a plane crash and say, well, it must be safe to live here because we drew a line on a map. And I understand that concern, I think we all do. The planning commission, not surprised they had the very same question and they said, what are you going to do if you've got planes crashing nearby? The answer to that unfortunately isn't simple, but again, your city has taken a great deal of precaution and, and a number of steps to be sure that the right thing was done. As you know, back when the general plan was going through, initially, there really wasn't a lot in it about how to develop around the airport. It was a touchy subject. Developers sure had their view and the airport had their view and at the time Mayor Kavanaugh was chairing the committee and he had his view. And so we all worked together on that. The end result is, we knew on the one hand, everybody wants a course, everybody wants Luke Air Force Base to prosper and continue. It's not only for the West Valley, but for the state of Arizona as well. In addition, there are people who own land in and around the area, farmers like the Abel family for instance on this property, who have been farming in some cases for generations, holding onto the land to the, just the right time, when it was appropriate and right to sell the land and be able to retire and not have to break their backs anymore. Should we have said, anywhere within the vicinity of a military airport, anywhere in that ten square mile box, we're just not going to let you develop because who knows, a plane could fall out of the sky. Talk about lawsuits, that's where they would have come from. A lot of landlords would have said, you can't do that. It's not, it doesn't make sense to just take the whole West Valley and say no development because a plane could crash. So, we went to state law and found that they had already put standards in state law about what ought to be within the sixty-five LDN and without. Now, those are lines drawn based on noise, we had to make them as accurate as they could. People have since, you know, in a sense carved them into the ground, we know right where they are. And based on state law, the city and then Luke Air Force Base, and I should say many other cities now, have determined that we're going to decide, we don't know if a plane would crash within the noise contours or without, but what we do know is there's a better chance that would be over here in the accident potential zone, kind of right in the direct flight of the runway where they're taking off, than it would be over here outside of the noise contour. And so as a policy decision, after wise discussion at public hearings, lot of input from the citizens, lot of input from attorneys and others, the city made the decision that in our general plan, we're going to put a guideline. And if you're outside of this line and your density is below a particular number, we think we're being wise, we think we're being cautious, we think it's appropriate. We can never guard against whatever potential accident could happen, but we've found a way to use the land in the West Valley, hopefully with appropriate guidelines that we can be comfortable with. And so I think that's sort of the, the policy behind it. And I have a draft stip on that other matter, if you're interested.
Several stipulations though, too. Navigation easement, can they sign? Are you satisfied or?
No, no, the, the point I'm getting to is this. A lot of people sign a lot of things going in and then when the accident does happen, they say, oh gee, we didn't know we'd sign that and this is not what we're aware of. What I want to make certain of is that your salespeople make certain that not only do they sign that, but that they read that to them, that they understand what they're signing. Because this is what happens, you've got a stack of papers this high that you're signing one after another to buy your house, to buy your home, and you get pretty.
It gets confusing.
Fired after a while, I mean, your fingers get cramped up and you begin to not listen to what is being said. It's very important that, that your salespeople make, make this very clear when they sign this because they might pass over it and that, I've heard that in, in a lawsuit where, gee, we didn't know what we were signing at, at the time. I just think, I want you people to really make certain that you make a bigger issue, as big an issue as you can of it.
Okay.
And I appreciate the fact that you'll have the map on the wall.
And I should point out, Vice Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but Mr. Schmitz was pointing out to me as well, not only will we also have an aggravation, I was going to say, adnigation easement, not an aggravation easement, recorded over the land and recorded in the county recorder's office, but stip forty-three also requires this and this is something people, the very same comment that you just made, well, sure, they're signing it, but there's a big pile, people have said, well, then we're going to go one step further. And we are required then, the developers shall post signage on the property that identifies Talavertia Estates is in a quote, Luke Air Force Base overflight area unquote, and B, adjacent to the Luke Air Force Base sixty-five LDN noise contour. Now, the size, the locations, the configuration, the type print, everything on the sign, the stip says, shall be reviewed and approved by community development director prior to the approval of any final plat for this project. So what some places have done, up in Surprise for example, on your very street signs, on top of the street names, there's another sign and it says Luke Air Force Base overflight area and it says it on every corner essentially. And there's other creative ways to do that as well. And so really, you're very concerned, I think the staff have thought ahead and this is what, and I apologize for not pointing that out ahead of time, but it looks like they're headed that way and, and we agree with you.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else further discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll move to nine C and that's the rezoning and I'd ask the clerk to read your ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance two thousand six nine nine eight, providing for conditional rezoning of two hundred and fifty-six acres of property from the preliminary planned area development zoning district to the final planned area development zoning district for residential development known as Talavertia Estates, generally located at the southeast corner of Camelback Road and Citrus Road, amending supplementary zoning map number oh five two three eight to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. I'd ask if, if Councilmember Antoniak would make the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve ordinance number two thousand six dash nine nine eight, as read by the clerk with the additional stipulation reading and stipulation forty-six, which for conversational purposes I already passed by Rourke. Stipulation forty-six reading, the developer shall notify in writing the buyers of homes on one hundred and seventy-eighth lane of the potential of future vehicular access to the approximate five acre residential property adjacent this cul-de-sac.
Okay. Where's the mayor? And the acre, okay. And the acreage is two fifty-six, is that correct? Yes. Okay. Second motion? Okay, motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Souza, it's open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I just think it's important to note, the spirit of this is just those five to eight homes in that lower cul-de-sac, so not the hundred, not the one hundred and seventy-eighth lane throughout the entire development, which I assume the alignment moves to the north, but just those in the southwestern quadrant of this development adjacent that five acre parcel. Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of motion, we can start by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose?
Supposed to be a roll call.
No, neither roll call vote.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll move to basically Los Ventanas and we'll do nine D, E, F, and G. Nine D is the pre-annexation development agreement. Nine D is the annexation, talking one hundred and fifty-nine point three one acres. Then we have a rezoning is F and then G is the preliminary plat. We're moving on this one. Okay, so Harvey Kraus will present the first two and then Rick Williams the second two and after that we'll handle each one individually, I think. Yes? Yes. Okay?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, this is the first item, is the pre-annexation development agreement for Los Ventanas, which is a hundred and fifty-nine acres at the southeast corner of Perryville Road. The property is within the city's strip annexed area, we have a ten-foot strip along Perry, on the east side of Perryville Road, so it touches the city's boundary in that location. The crosshatched areas are those particular annexations that are, have been annexed or in progress and as you, as you can tell, we do have two other annexations that are abutting in Los Ventanas, they're in the, that are in process of, at this time. There is also county property in this area and this, these are areas that are county properties that have not, we have not received any kind of development proposals for at this, at this time. Los Ventanas is owned by Patricia Schaber and she's in the process of selling this property to a group known as West Side Enterprises One LLC Limited Liability Corporation and this property was one of sixteen that was included in the memorandum of understanding that the council approved May twenty-third, two thousand and five, so it's been almost a year since the memo, that MOU was approved by council and since that time, made great progress on, on the implementing the MOU. As part of the, the, one of the provisions of the MOU was that each of these developers, sixteen developers would enter into development agreements and several have already been done. This particular developer, I believe it's, is entering into this development agreement and it mirrors the MOU, so the terms and conditions of the MOU are exactly mirrored in this development agreement. Essentially, what the development provides for, just very briefly, is financial contributions for wastewater capacity. It's based on a total number of units, four hundred and twelve units are being proposed, roughly upfront contribution of about one point four million for wastewater capacity, approximately one hundred and twenty-three thousand for the bottleneck sewer, water's almost a million dollars and fire capital would be two hundred and fifty-seven. So there is considerable amount of financial, upfront financial contributions at the approval of the first final plat for Los Ventanas. And in consideration for this, these financial contributions, the city is agreeing to provide services to this property, provide a minimum density of two point eight five dwelling units per acre, provide for expedited, expedited processing of this development. As you can tell, we're doing four development issues in one agenda, which typically we have not done in the past, is a pre-annexation agreement. We combine the preliminary and final PADS into one process and we're also doing a final, or a preliminary plat, excuse me, a preliminary plat, one, yeah, I'm sure you would, preliminary plat at this time. Then we also have agreed to assist in cost recovery and setting up a cost recovery program for that infrastructure that needs to be, that others benefited from, that, within the MOU area, within the sixteen property owners. So that's the development agreement. The annexation follows, also the annexation is on the agenda to annex the property. We had the public hearing on August twenty-second, two thousand and five, there were no public comments. The, the property would be annexed with agricultural urban district zoning, we'll give you a better map here, zero in on Los Ventanas. The property would be annexed as one dwelling unit to an acre, which is consistent with the county zoning of one unit to an acre, which we're required to do by law. And then the annexation, if the council approves the annexation ordinance tonight, it will become effective thirty days after ordinance adoption. So with that, that's the pre-annexation development agreement and annexation and then Rick Williams is now going to talk about the final PAD in the preliminary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Kraus pointed out, located within this planned area development, the applicant is requesting four hundred and twelve single-family lots. Also associated with this request is a thirteen point seven acre commercial aspect of this located in the northwest corner. And I would just direct your attention to the general plan map, Los Ventanas, located right there indicating the commercial aspect of that in the northwest corner. Within the planned area development, the applicant is proposing a multitude of lot sizes ranging in size from sixty by one fifteen up to eighty by one thirty, so they are fairly good lot sizes. As we spoke earlier, they are proposing a neighborhood commercial corner in the northwest quadrant of it. Their proposed density at this point is three point oh one. Los Ventanas is offering twenty-two point nine, I'm sorry, twenty-two point oh nine acres of open space or roughly sixteen percent. Now of that twenty-two acres, roughly twenty percent of that is set aside for active use. And I would say that amenities will include two five acre parks, three pocket parks, residential lots facing open space, shaded verandas and assortment of ball fields. And I would just direct your attention to one hundred and eighty-third avenue along the eastern border here. And as you'll see, probably at a meeting next month, the Van Lewin Farms is coming in and they've actually got a nice little shared green belt along that western border with a T entry into the development that is really a nice amenity that they've come up with. The citizen participation meeting was held on September seventh and there was no opposition opposed to this development. Staff feels it is consistent with the general plan, we are recommending approval of ordinance oh six one zero zero one with the stipulation set forth before you. And with that, sir, that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, so we've done nine D, E, or staff presented nine D, E, F, and G and goes from pre-annexation through preliminary plat, opportunity for the applicants?
Mayor Kavanaugh, city council members, I'm still Andy Moore, thirty-one oh one North Central, Street one thousand in Phoenix, here on behalf of Beazer Homes, who will also be the developer of this property. First of all, we appreciate staffs working with us. As Harvey pointed out, those MOU development agreements, one of the things they provided besides that we pay lots of money upfront is that the city will work to expedite our cases and this is a great example of it. Four items on one case on the, on the same agenda. As I said to Harvey, we're happy to do final PAD tonight too, if you want to just knock that out, but I think probably the city would want us to wait on that up. So as far as the annexation, this is, you saw the checkerboard, there's still some properties that, that have yet to come in, but many of them are coming in. Back when we did the general plan, this was sort of way out there on the west side, you'd have to be doing leapfrog development to get here and now, as you see, it's becoming more and more a part of the city and being developed in some real quality neighborhoods. So we're excited about that. The pre-annexation development agreement, it's the MOU template, we've continued to hone these things between the city attorney's office and, and those of us working on it and it's really streamlined. The language now comes back in and you forgot the word two on page three because everyone's kind of got an idea what these are. If you have any questions about how that works, I'm happy to answer it, but I think you have approved a couple of these already and we'll have some more coming through and they're basically a good deal for developers because they let us find a way to get infrastructure to our projects and they're a good deal for the city because the money is paid upfront, you don't have to come up with the first and worst cases and so if we can all work it out, we're going to have some, some pretty quick development out here that'll, that'll get people going. The PAD, staff did a good job talking about the final PAD. Again, there is a one acre out parcel that's not part of this, it is part of the annexation however, they, that property owner joined in and became part of the annexation, so they will be part of your city and they are working with us, they just haven't geared up towards their development phase yet, but, so they aren't part of the PAD. One of our stipulations, talking about roadway improvements, it says, well, what are you going to do about that corner if you don't own it? And we had the same problem actually up at the one you just approved, Talavertia Estates commercial corner that's not owned, but the staff worked with us and planning commission worked with us so that the stip- us, so that the stipulations say, basically, we will improve any adjacent roadways, and we're required to work with this property owner to attempt to get the right-of-way from them, in which case we will then develop and improve the half-street right-of-ways. So that's part of our development. We're actually required in our agreements to give a percentage to that traffic signal up there as well, even though we don't, we don't really own that corner. But it seems fair that we originally might be creating a lot of traffic in that area. Well, we don't own the corner, but we're, we're contributing our share to that as well. And then, the final, or the preliminary P A D just, just tracks with the final, preliminary plat tracks with the final P A D. As you can see, there's a variety of lot sizes and different segments. We think, again, that's going to be a nice project. That commercial corner is going to be neighborhood commercial, probably a grocery store, that type of thing. And that is, as you saw from staff, that's part of the general plan, and we're just following the general plan. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments on the public? Seeing none, ask, okay, we'll start with nine D. That's the pre-annexation development agreement, and like to ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution two thousand five one zero two-two, approving a pre-annexation development agreement with Westside Enterprises One LLC, an Arizona limited liability company regarding the annexation and infrastructure development of a hundred and fifty-nine acres, generally located at the southeast corner of the Yuma Road and Perryville Road within the city of Goodyear, and providing for an effective date.
Did I hear you say two thousand six or five? Two thousand six.
It says two thousand five, but I think the coax is two thousand six.
No.
It does say two thousand six.
No, I don't know.
The resolution.
I've seen it both ways, so I'm not sure.
Resolution title, attached to coax is two thousand six dash one zero two-two.
It should be two thousand six, because it's adopted, and that's how we maintain our numbers.
Talking two thousand six dash one zero two-two. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept resolution two thousand six dash one zero two-two, as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Scott, second from Councilmember Holland. It's open for discussion. Again, this is the pre-annexation development agreement. Councilmember Antoniak?
Question for staff about the stipulation requiring the developer to work with that one-acre parcel. If they can't get them to work with them, what is our action at that point? Do we go into condemnation, try and secure the half-street? The reason being, I remember driving by eighty-third and Bell for so long before that In-N-Out Burger got there, and it was just this standalone corner. And I believe they were seeing some street improvements that had to take place, sidewalk and that sort of thing.
Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, if, if the right-of-way cannot be secured by the developer or the city, then they would be tapering that corner with road improvements unless we can get the right-of-way.
Can't either.
I'm sorry. If the, it's, the developer is going to attempt to get the right-of-way, if we are unable, the city is unable to get the right-of-way, or do not want to get the right-of-way, then the developer would do tapering of the improvements, and the corner would not be improved. And the, the corner would be improved when development occurs at that corner.
Okay, so, but we would have the option to seek condemnation or seek resolution on acquiring that property as the city?
Yes.
You're talking one acre at an intersection. It seems, it seems to me it would be critical at this juncture, once this development is in, and the development's to the north and to the west, to have a street signal there.
Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, that is correct. The city would have the ability to acquire the, the right-of-way, and then the developer would install the improvements.
But we're not making a statement or recommendation?
No, we're not making a recommendation now. I'm just wondering what our recourse is.
All right. Would that alleviate any concern that we might have for the traffic signal that would be on that corner?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, the, the traffic signal would typically be, when warranted, and, and improvements would, the traffic signal would probably occur when the commercial development goes in, or when the improvements go in. That's typically what, that was, is when that would occur.
If we don't acquire, or he doesn't go along with the annexation, or, or, what do we do about the traffic light, then? That's going to be a busy corner.
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, as, as Councilmember Antoniak pointed out, I think what the city would be able to do is condemn the, the right-of-way and then do the traffic signal and the improvements.
But we do have an avenue that we can follow and take care of that problem?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, again, we're on nine D. Whoever roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And now move to nine E, and that's the annexation. And I ask the clerk if she'd read the ordinance by title only, please?
Ordinance two thousand six one zero zero, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title Nine, Chapter Four, Article Seven, Arizona Revised Statutes, and amendments thereto, by annexing one hundred and fifty-nine point three-one acres of land, generally located at the southwest, southeast corner of Perryville and Yuma Roads, and providing a city zoning designation of agricultural urban.
Okay, I had this as two thousand one.
Two thousand.
I mean, one thousand one.
One thousand.
One thousand.
It is on the new agenda.
We're on E. Nine E.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I got it. Thank you. Okay.
Motion?
No, this is wrong on this one. Okay, but it is one thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, it's open for discussion?
No.
Motion?
I move we adopt ordinance two zero zero six one zero zero zero.
Second. Motion, Councilmember Lord, and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. It's open for discussion.
It's got to be the first one she's gotten in in like a month.
Okay. You know, discussion, last for roll call vote. Again, it's on the annexation?
Yeah, I have. Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, now we'll move to the rezoning, and that's nine F. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance two thousand six one zero one, providing for conditional rezoning of a hundred and fifty-nine point three-one acres of property from the agricultural urban zoning district to the phytoplanned area development zoning district for a single-family residential development known as Los Ventanas, located east of Perryville Road, south of Yuma Road, and north of Durango Street, amending supplementary zoning map number six oh five two three seven to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Can I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance two thousand six dash one zero zero one.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak, second from Councilmember Scott. It's open for discussion. Seeing none, Vice Mayor?
I have a question. Two, two comments on, one, on the fire department, do you have any problem with entrances into this, or the curvatures, or the streets getting into a, an emergency? There isn't any problem with the distance in the inner part of this development from the outside. I can't tell where the entrances are. I see one on Perryville, and I, I see one on the north on Yuma. I guess the rest are, okay. Those are two on the side. Yes, sir, yes. Mr. Mayor, council members, entrances located here and here along one hundred and eighty-third, sort along Perryville Road right over here, Durango Street, and Yuma Road as well.
Along with that second question in, well, actually, there's three. The pedestrian pathways, I see them coming through these park areas, but I don't see them along the streets. Are there sidewalks along the streets?
Mr. Mayor, remember, yes, sir, there are. Along, um, Yuma, along Yuma Road, sir?
No, within the development itself.
Yes, absolutely.
There are sidewalks, five foot.
Five foot.
Sidewalks. And then your, your retaining areas, part of retaining areas. If those don't work, which many in that area don't, you're willing to come back and put a drainage system in for the drainage of, to empty those water retaining systems?
Vice Mayor Cavalier, yeah, for some reason, our, our retaining area doesn't work appropriately according to the city's standards. And we certainly have to retain our water and get rid of it in appropriate manner, and we'll do whatever we would have to do.
Since it doesn't rain here, but once every five years, what, what is the, I mean, I mean, really, a good rain, what would be the possibility, after this is all developed, and you're gone, you're coming back to do it? Is that, say, year two or three after you're gone?
Well, I, you're, of course, you're correct that it doesn't rain here very often, but it, it also takes us a good deal of time to get one of these things built. And we're going to have to, everything we do is going to be tested and approved by your city engineering department, so that they're confident that we meet their standards, that they're confident that our project is going to be one sustainable, not just when it's first built, but well into the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, can I roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Now move to the last item on Los Ventanas, and that's the preliminary plat. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the pre-plat, subdivising a hundred and fifty-nine point three-one acres into four hundred and twelve single-family lots for residential development known as Los Ventanas, generally located east of Perryville Road, south of Yuma Road, and north of Durango.
Motion, Councilmember Antoniak, second from Councilmember Lord. It's open for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, seven zero. Okay, we'll now move to Palm Valley, Phase Nine. This is north of Camelback. It's nine H, nine I, and we'll do those together. David Canning will present. We'll ask for comment from the public, and then we'll break it down, and we'll panel each H separately and I separately.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public. The subject two-hundred-nine acre property is highlighted in red on this exhibit and is located on the north side of Camelback Road, east of the Falcon Dunes, Falcon Gulf Course in Maricopa County, west and north of the city of Litchfield Park, and south of Luke Air Force Base. To give you a better idea of how Phase Nine fits in with the rest of Palm Valley, I'd like to present the Palm Valley Master Plan. It was adopted, and latest adoption and revision in two thousand and four. And Phase Nine is located at this location, again, north of Camelback Road, and north of Phase Five, and north of the city of Litchfield Park. Tonight, the SunCorps Development Company is requesting rezoning of approximately two-hundred-nine acres from the agricultural district to the final planned area development district, which will be known as Palm Valley Phase Nine. And within Phase Nine, the applicant is proposing a mixture of residential, industrial, and open space uses. In addition, the applicant is also requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the Palm Valley Phase Nine developments. This next exhibit demonstrates the lotting layout for Phase Nine. The tan area, or starting to the west, this green area represents fifty-eight acres, or rather, fifty-seven acres of potential future parkland or open space that SunCorps is donating to the city. The proposed zoning for this tract is public facilities district. The tan area just to the east is a fifty-eight acre section that will contain a light industrial zoning. The applicant is proposing twenty light industrial lots with some architecture, landscape, and use deviations from the light industrial district requirements. And these deviations are described in detail within the discussion section of the rezoning staff report. And this brown area, farther to the east, represents seventy-nine acres of low-density single-family residential, which will contain, which will contain two hundred and eighteen single-family lots and have a gross density of two and three-fourths, or two point seven-five dwelling units per acre. Each of those lots will range in size between sixty and eighty feet wide and have a minimum lot area of seven thousand square feet. Finally, this yellow area at the southeast corner of the project represents multifamily medium-density residential tract, which will be limited to density of twelve dwelling units per acre. To help reduce the impact of the industrial portion of this project on the single-family residences, a one-hundred-foot-wide landscape buffer has been provided. In addition, seven-foot wall will be, will be provided on both sides, and a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer will be provided behind lots fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty. Also, to reduce the impact of multifamily property in the single-family residences, staff has added a stipulation that requires a twenty-foot-wide landscape buffer on the north end of the property. Within Phase Nine, twenty-two acres of open space is proposed, and fourteen of those twenty-two acres will be maintained as active or usable areas by the Property Owners Association. And this acreage does not include the fifty-seven acres that will be donated to the city during the final plat stage. On September twenty-second, two thousand and five, a citizen review meeting was held for this rezoning request, and no residents were in attendance at that meeting. And on March fifteenth, two thousand and six, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning request and preliminary plat request. And before concluding, I would like to enter into the public record revised rezoning supplementary map, believe the map that you may have received in your packet incorrectly listed the zoning, but also incorrectly showed the northern boundary of the Phase Nine development. In conclusion, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning request to final planned area developments and the preliminary plat request with the conditions contained within staff reports. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. Opportunity for the applicant?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jay Ellingson, SunCorps Development, one four one three oh, West McDowell Road, Goodyear. It's privileged to be here again tonight, see some of you. I haven't seen you for a while. This is a, a process that we started in October of oh-three, in terms of the first time we made application for this property. We have worked with past staff members that are no longer with the city, and I will take credit for some of the slowness of this. But it's something that we've been working on for a long time, that complies with our general plan that was approved. The first thing that we do in terms of working through any of our plats before we submit, we visit with the representatives of Luke Air Force Base and get an understanding relative to not only their provisions, but also those of the state statute. This follows all of those provisions, and we think it's a, a good plan that utilizes the property in the best we can in terms of those requirements for those that are in the neighborhood, including Luke. So with that, I'll answer any questions if you have any. And like I say, the process has been one that has been lengthy, and we would certainly like to move on with this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, we're turning then with nine H, and that's the rezoning. And I ask clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number oh-six-one-zero-zero-two, providing for conditional rezoning of approximately two hundred and nine point three acres of property, generally located north of Camelback Road, west of the Sun Health property in Litchfield Park, and east of the Falcon Dunes Gulf Course. property in Litchfield Park, and east of the Falcon Dunes Golf Course in Maricopa County, known as Palm Valley Phase Nine, from the Agricultural District to the final planned area development district for mixed-use residential and industrial and open space development. Amending supplementary zoning map to numbers 05216 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion, Councilmember Lord. And a second from...
Councilmember Scott.
Councilmember Scott. Okay, it's open for discussion. Councilmember Susan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The concerns I had when we first went into reading what this property entailed was my concern for the close proximity of the property with Luke Air Force Base, and in particular are the homes that are in the northern section of the property. And in looking at a map, you'll notice that they are close to or near to the ammunition storage facility at Luke Air Force Base, and I voiced this concern to the city manager, and evidently he did discuss this with staff, and staff evidently discussed it with the developer, and as a result, we do have stipulations, 29 in the rezoning ordinance that takes care of this problem. I appreciate the cooperation on all parts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So that's the 29?
Right.
The concern. I assume, is it closest to the ammunition storage area? Is that what it's concerned about? Further discussion? Is this... Councilmember Holland.
I just had one question about the view wall. It said it was acceptable, and I was just wondering if you could just tell me where that would be.
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, the view wall has to do with the wall that separates the industrial from the residential essentially along the dotted line. When we presented that to planning and zoning, there was a discussion relative to what would be the best way served for this open area in terms of, one, screening it from the industrial properties, and, two, visibility into a kind of a common tract that does have a pathway through it. And I'm not sure what the best is. I gave my opinion. I think there were some on the Planning and Zoning Commission that at least proposed that instead of a solid wall, that it would be four foot of masonry and then two foot of wrought iron. And I think staff, after consideration of that, had came back to us and said, "Would you consider that?" And we said, "If you think it's a better solution, certainly." But it's still a question in terms of what will be better served in terms of those residents that are next to the industrial property, although some distance away, and there's another seven-foot wall that then divides again. So if the staff believes that that's the best solution, then we certainly will support it.
So it would give them a view of kind of the greenbelt area going through there, but they would also have a really nice view of the seven-foot wall that's back of the industrial area?
It is, but there will be additional landscaping on the other side of the wall, and so I could probably argue it either way, in all fairness. Then I'll let staff respond in any way they would like.
Would you like a staff response?
Oh, yes, I'm just kinda seeing how we got to this point.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Holland, as Mr. Ellingson indicated, we kinda debated it back and forth, and it seemed to make sense to have the view wall along the, at least a partial view wall, along the residential side, because there is a walking path and a trail system that will be developed in there along with landscaping, so while it's true there'd be a seven-foot wall on the industrial side, you would have the landscaping in the area in between. And I think the other thought that occurred to us is that the partial view fence would also help provide some visibility for the neighbors, to people walking in the path, and vice versa for security purposes. I know for one, I live exactly in a situation like this, where I have a partial view wall, and there's a 60-to-80-foot area behind, and you can at least see the tops of people's heads going by, and they know that they're being watched, and vice versa, and so I think it does, I think it's mutually beneficial for the people who use the facility to know that there may be some eyes on them.
Just one little additional thing. Could you kind of remind me of how much green space there is between the residential area and the industrial area?
On this plat, as proposed, it's 100 feet.
Yeah. I got it. I have a question. The wall, it's gonna be seven feet high. How high is the industrial area that we're trying to block the view of? How high is that gonna be?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Scott, are you referring to the elevation of the ground? I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. Do you...
I have another suggestion, but I...
Okay. You know?
Mayor, Councilmember Scott, that you're talking about the elevation or grade of the two areas? They're essentially the same. On the preliminary plat, we, at staff request, we offered up kind of a sightline, if you There's our little guy right there. And there's the top of the head if you're not vertically challenged.
Pretty good. But in this day and age, a wall is not a wall, always. And so you could do things with this wall. We had an interesting discussion here last time with regard to public art, and that might be something, we're not gonna dictate public art to you, but that may be something to superimpose on this wall in order to make it a little bit more topical for folks.
An interesting suggestion.
Expensive.
It is, and I will tell you, I will tell you that I've had this discussion with staff probably a decade ago, from the standpoint of walls. There are those that like to see walls, and there are those that don't like to see walls. The philosophy originally with Palm Valley was is that you would try to landscape in front of the walls so the walls wouldn't become a dominant feature. There are other thoughts and philosophies regarding walls where they become very dominant in their appearance. But I will tell you that kind of the philosophy from day one is that our walls kind of disappear. You look more at the landscaping than you do the wall.
Mr. Security. Vice Mayor? I have a concern with the, I'm looking at that distance from fire station 183, and I'd like to ask the fire chief, is that a four-minute response time to that area from your fire station? Vice Mayor Cavalier? This is the location north of Camelback, correct? Yes, I have it. I just wanted to verify. Thank you. It will not be within a four-minute response time threshold of station 183. It will be just beyond the four-minute response time threshold of station 185 as it is developed at Pebble Creek Parkway and Clubhouse Drive. It'll actually be closer to that fire station, but it will be outside of it, as might be predicted on a fringe area such as this that kind of creeps up to the north. So... There won't be any fire station even planned for in any of those areas? That addresses that area and not specifically, no, sir. Let's see. Thank you. Okay, I don't know if it's Joe or David. The PMZ had comments on the 80 acres that was either sold or donated by Suncor. They bombed up the ammunition storage area and the wall around it. Could you identify those on the map? The distance calculated or advised as far as how far they are from the, particularly the wall and the ammunition storage area from the housing?
Mayor Kavanaugh, the, this arc that is imposed on the map here obviously is not by chance, it's by design, and I believe that is the minimum distance that Luke Air Force Base prefers to have for a safety area of distance from the munitions storage. I believe that is 2,000 feet. Is that the correct dimension? Anybody know? Do you know the dimension? Approximately 2,000 feet.
I thought I read a mile and a quarter or something. There was a separation that much. And now, you know, I remember that from a couple of years ago, we talked about this area, but I guess, how far north of this is the storage area?
Looking at the Anuragel photograph earlier this afternoon, it's approximately a quarter mile north of this north line.
That's all.
There we have a... And this is the storage area here.
And there was a discussion about a wall, and...
Mayor Kavanaugh, I did see that discussion in the minutes, and when I was trying to recall what exactly we discussed, it, I'm not sure I remembered quite properly. The developer does plan to put a subdivision boundary wall along the north line of the property, and I don't know if, the question Commissioner DeBrockert was asking is whether or not there was any kind of wall around the munitions storage, and I think the answer that was given was that there wasn't, and if Luke wanted to have one around the munitions storage, then it would be their responsibility to put one around. But it's the developer's intent to have a, and it's a requirement to have a subdivision perimeter wall.
But, okay, then I guess that answers my question. The base doesn't feel a need for a wall, no matter who pays for it.
We had not received a comment to that effect, no.
There is one, one and a quarter mile.
One and a quarter, that's what I thought, yeah.
Mayor, councilmembers, I did speak with Bob Dofsky, and he's in the audience this evening, and he indicated to me that there's no intention of Luke putting a wall around that, the munitions, nor is there a budget, budgeted funds at Luke to do that. Or desire to do that.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, do you have a safety factor here? What is the potential explosive power, whatever ammunition is, with regard to its threats? What?
Have the big earth mounds.
Yeah?
Store the bullets underneath it.
That's all we're talking about, small round and stuff?
Rocket, 500-pound bombs.
Now, we're talking about 500-pound bombs? Yeah. I think we ought to know something about this.
But the base has approved, or at least did not disapprove, this particular development, correct? It seemed like a lukewarm support, but it was supportive. Correct? Rusty did sign the letter.
Yes. They do have concerns. Luke Air Force Base is here, they may, you know, let them talk to the safety aspects, but we've done everything we could to protect the residents and inform them of any kind of safety concerns, but... Did you want to speak? Did you want to hear from Luke Air Force Base?
Bob Dofsky from Luke Air Force Base. Safety concerns, yes, there is a safety concern on it, but according to the statutes and anything that has to do with what we're legally binding by, we can't object to it. However, there's a quality distance line which these houses back up to. Now, if there was to be an explosion in the munitions storage area, there would be an overpressure in that point, and there will be structural damage. May not be severe, but something could be damaged if everything is blown up. Also, there could be debris that goes even further, but again, we have a quality distance line, and this is not where everything is safe on the other side, it's an acceptable damage line. However, we are a little more concerned about environmental hazards with the jet engine test area, which is also close by. This produces high noise, and it's at all hours, or can be at all hours of the night. We've received complaints from other communities in the area, and we answer these complaints. However, this isn't considered part of the 65 LDM. This is sporadic noise, and it could be any time. However, there's nothing that says we, nothing that prevents us from approving this based on that noise.
When these engines are, if I... Yeah, go ahead. When these engines are tested, for what period of time does the operation run?
What hour?
No. How long does it?
Oh, it could last anywhere from minutes to a couple hours. They would run up the engine, they would tune it, they would run it down, they would run it up and down. Now, they have sound suppressors that they back these up to. Now, these would muffle the noise considerably, however, when they put it back on the plane, they've got to test it again, and then you're gonna have noise without the sound suppressor.
Mr. Mayor, that's the importance of these stipulations that we've talked about, in having them placed within areas such as this, not only to protect the potential home buyer, but also to protect the city as well, and the developer in the long run. Thank you very much. Yeah, I think, I hadn't thought about the engine. That is noisy. I mean...
The engine test cells can be a noisy area.
Is that, did we mention that in here as part of our... It's not in there.
We haven't mentioned it in any of our letters.
I know, but it, boy, and you're right, there's still 65 LDM qualifications.
That's not figured into the 65 noise.
But these people aren't far from that engine testing, as I recall.
No, they aren't.
Yeah. Could we put a stipulation in there, apprising them that they are near one loud horrendous noise, that when it goes off, they will wake up? They need to know.
We've gotten complaints from Sun Health, residents down there, and from other areas in the housing that's nearby.
Do we wanna put a stip in there on that, or specify?
Don't we, don't we take care of that, though, in case subsequent noises?
What do you mean, subsequent noise?
Well, from the operation itself. It's not a flyover noise.
It's a noise with that engine in full afterburning on the ground. It is loud.
I'm golfing.
I hear it at my house, so... You hear the testing side of it? Yeah. I can hear the testing of the Goodyear Airport with those big planes clear up from my house. And I know those things are loud, and they've got a shield area.
So they're looped.
Whenever possible, they'll use the sound suppressors.
I'm all for this development. I just, we need to tell people.
I think you ought to. I think you're also typical flying noise. I think you ought to, we should tell them, we should tell them about this ammunition thing, too, and it could ruin their house. Not likely, but it could.
I don't think it would be a problem.
No.
It was explained to us that there would be an overpressure, I forgot exactly, 1.4
or something like that, which would cause some structural damage to the front house.
Different than 29.
For clarity, would you put overpressure in layman's term? I mean, what type?
Well, when there's an explosion, there's a concussion that...
An earthquake-type feeling to it.
Comes along, a compression of air, and that compression of air would...
Yeah, oh, you see it.
You see it coming. You see it coming.
When was the last explosion that you had, or told?
It would probably be in the 1940s on the east post.
Thank you.
Yes. As I stated, our more, the concern we have is more of the noise from the jet test, jet cell area.
How about if we would add to 29 on that tenth line, and says, "And all, subject property is, subject property is subject to attendant noise, vibration, dust, and all other effects that may be caused by overflights and by the operation of aircraft landing landing at or taking off from Luke Air Force Base and/or the Goodyear, as well as noise emanating from the engine test stand located on the base."
Yeah, sure.
That would be also in separation. 28 as well, Mayor.
We're talking about 28M. 29.
28 and 29.
Oh, on both.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we just put that in without having a motion, or want a motion on that?
Should we?
You need a motion.
Okay. Okay, so whoever, see, where are we on this, anyway?
Georgia made the motion.
I made the motion, so do I need to add?
You made the motion, yeah. Mayor, real quick. Yeah, here. Mr. Allison's been awfully quiet during this, but is there any objection or add? I'm just curious if there's any.
He indicated to me there was.
Well, I know, he's nodding his head, but I want to make sure he's aware that you don't have an objection.
Mayor members.
Well, if he does, he does. I mean, at least he's gotten his opportunity. I think we're going to do it, but.
Mayor members of the council, we would go along with adding that. I will tell you that this is a really interesting process. And I, I, along with the staff at Luke, walk an interesting line. Because they are governed by not only statute and Air Force policy, but they're governed by the commitments that some of the people in the area have made long-term. And Suncor is one of those parties that has committed a lot of time and energy, have not flexed any corporate muscle in regard to some of the things that Luke has done over the years that have impacted our property dramatically. So the line is very, very interesting. Bob's probably said more at this meeting than I've heard him say at almost any meeting regarding anything that we've done together. He doesn't set that safety, it's really a munition safety area, quality control as he refers to it, I think, by Air Force policy. But we don't either. You know, somebody has to set that line, and then we live by the lines, and we do the best we can. So I, I wish there were another process, but that is the process, and we'll do the best we can in determining what we can develop within those adjacencies that they also must abide by. So, thank you.
So you have no objections to what the mayor has recommended?
No, I, I think it's good. In today's world, we really need to disclose everything we can. You know, I don't want to tell somebody that it's likely, or give percentages, or any of those kinds of things, but neither does he. So, thank you.
Do you want to interject after Luke Air Force Base saying, "As well as noise from jet, in jet engine testing"?
Yes, located on the base, located on the facility, so they know that that's where it is. Okay, so, all right, now, the clerk read the ordinance, we had a motion, we're discussing, is there further discussion before we, no, okay. Do we need an amendment to the?
Technically, we need an amendment.
Okay, could I have an amendment to the motion?
I make an amendment to the motion. Repeat this, to say, "As well as noise from jet engine testing located on the facility." And that's in objected after taking off from Luke Air Force Base, right after Luke Air Force Base.
Stipulation 28.
And stipulation 28.
Excuse me, stipulation 29?
29.
29 lines, tenth line.
Next one will be 28.
It's going to be 29?
This one's 29.
Well, this one's 29.
So, yeah, we'll just have the amendment on 29, and then 28 will make it part of the motion.
Okay.
So where do we want to put it?
Good, 29.
Okay.
And you said it, right?
Okay.
Okay, so a motion is made?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Lord, second from Councilmember Antoniak. Discussion's on the amendment. All those in favor of amendment signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Discussion on the overall motion? All those in favor of the amended motion signify, oh, no, no. Need a roll call.
Vice Mayor Cavalier. Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, now I'll move to the second and last item on this particular development, the preliminary plat. And could I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat with, including the motion, a comment modifying, adding to 28?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve the pre-plat for Palm Valley Phase 9, injecting the words, have it reflected in the last motion into stipulation 28 after Luke Air Force Base regarding the jet engine noise.
Second. I got a motion from Councilmember Antoniak, second from Councilmember Scott, again, this preliminary plat, it's open for discussion. Mr. Mayor. I would recommend that the exact verbiage that was stated for Section 29 be made a part of Section 28. So there's no conflict.
That was the spirit and intent of my, of my motion.
Yeah, the wording.
My comment reflecting the last motion made.
Okay, very good, thank you. It'll be exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Close. Nice to have a seven zero, thank you. Now I'll move the last item on our business agenda, and that's the approving the proximal rezoning of 2.077 acres on the east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, David Canning.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Subject 2.7 acre property is highlighted in black on this exhibit, or actually highlighted in red. It's generally located on the east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, 800 feet south of Virginia Avenue. The Goodyear Plain Regional Center is located to the east. Palm Valley Phase 8 is located to the west. The vacant property with the general commercial zoning is located to the north. The applicant is requesting rezoning from the agricultural district to the general commercial district in order to construct a commercial development consisting of one office building and one commercial building. This is the conceptual site plan for developments. The applicant is proposing a single-story retail building consisting of 6,400 square feet and a two-story 20,000 square foot office building. The development will be served by two access points on Pebble Creek Parkway, or, excuse me, Estrella Parkway. And parking will be provided to the rear of each building. These are the conceptual elevations for the developments, as well as colored site plan. Staff is generally supportive of these elevations, but believes some additional articulation is needed for the elevations that face Estrella Parkway. A formal design reprocess will take place upon the submittal of the site plan application. Where staff will have an opportunity to work with the applicant to achieve an acceptable building design. On March 15th, 2006, the planning and zoning commission recommended of this, recommended approval of this request by a vote of six to zero. And an alternate notification process was used to notify all of the property owners within 500 feet of the property. And that alternate process consisted of sending letters notifying them of this proposed rezoning. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. The proposed general commercial zoning is consistent with the regional commercial 90s designation for this property, and the proposed commercial development should be compatible with surrounding properties. This concludes my presentation. The applicant's staff are available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the applicant?
Vince Dolkey, 4041 North Central Avenue, Mayor and Council. We're happy to be here today, we think we've got a really great project. The site's very unique, as you can see, it's like a sword. So there's some challenges in trying to get the thing to work out, but we're happy with the result, and my client's excited to get started.
And what company is the developer?
My company's called Archicon, and the developer's Marsh Development, and they've done some other work here in Goodyear.
Is this where that Wells Fargo sign is?
South. Exactly.
In the north?
Correct. There's really three parcels kind of lined up along this stretch from Virginia to the north, down to our parcel where the canal kind of cuts across. And we've worked in conjunction with them to kind of develop a master G and D plan, and make sure this whole contiguous parcel works out the best. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public to make a sign in. Okay, could I ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please?
Ordinance 06-1003, rezoning 2,077 acres on east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, providing for conditional rezoning of approximately 2.07 acres of property generally located on the east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, approximately 800 feet south of Virginia Avenue, from the agricultural district to the general commercial district, amending supplementary zoning map number 05244 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have you there. Move we approve ordinance 2006-1003, as your clerk.
Second. Both from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Scott, it's open for discussion. Vice Mayor?
Only question I'm going to have is on the canal side. Is there anything there on that, is there a wall, or will be put in there to, as a barrier between the canal and the parking area in that shopping center? Will there be anything?
There's currently nothing proposed as a separation between the building and the canal right now. It's going to be landscaped there, there's not a requirement for it to be landscaped. Unlike an industrial park, if you're trying to really buffer you, it's really not a definitive need to have a buffer there.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Yeah, I just wanted to go on the record commenting, really kind of a neat design, unique project, and you're working with them a lot of confines. I agree with staff on, while it's an excellent-looking project, the four-sided architecture, just given the environment in which this is in, is, I think, important, that it doesn't look like it's the back of the house that's adjacent to Estrella Parkway. And I don't know about the rest of my peers, but if that needed to be achieved within a smaller setback or that sort of thing, if there was any circumstances, I'd be willing to hear that. So if you need to, if it's a square footage issue, that four-sided architecture takes off square footage, I'd rather see, you know, bumping out a foot or two and coming into that circumstance, I don't know if we already are or not.
We'd be open to maybe allowing some canopies or some projections into that setback line. That'd be open to staff to have that stipulation, be open to that. Because there is some articulation issue trying to achieve with a building like this, and it'd be helpful to have that latitude.
I don't know if that's something we need, or if that's something they decide they want to do and come back and get an amendment at that point in time. On a consent agenda, if that's what you need, but I just wanted to bring it up tonight, that way in case you face that challenge when you're in meetings. I don't know if everybody else feels that way.
That is a good point.
I think we do. Councilmember Sousa, to staff, question to staff. Do you feel that there's adequate parking here to accommodate the type of facilities that are going to be operating here?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, the applicant has met parking requirements for proposed square footages in terms of office space and retail space. In fact, I believe they exceed the required parking spaces.
I count four, you said.
67 spaces are required for the office space, and 21 are required for retail. I think it shows here eight outdoor seating. And 101 have been provided on the site.
Can you put that on the Elmo? We got it. Oh, yeah, I see this is cut off here. Okay. So you say there are how many 101?
101.
I guess you can't squeeze any more than that in there.
Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Sorry, I'll occupy the time again, one more time, but, you know, just note, obviously, this is a very nice looking piece of architecture, and something to maybe hold up as an example as other developers come in along there. Obviously, the proof is in the pudding, and we'll see it when it gets built, but, I mean, it's just, it's really nice. You've got outdoor, you know, outdoor areas, you know, utilizing, utilizing that area in a very effective manner. I can't reiterate that enough. It's, I think you're starting to set the tone along that northern portion of Estrella and Pebble Creek Parkway that I'd like to see continue, north and south of that area. See what I'm saying about that? Just trying to give us some best comments, so if you'll see.
There's no name associated with this, is there? I saw Pebble Creek Retail, we weren't going to call it that earlier. Pardon me?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say that's correct, that's the name we have so far is Pebble Creek Retail. I'm sure the applicable new name, we're working on it.
Pardon me?
The applicant says they're working on it.
Okay. Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Council Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Yeah, that completes this part of our agenda. I want to thank city clerk and community development and deputy city manager for changing and modifying the agenda so it works tonight. It was a difficult thing to do, and everybody to try to keep up with it, that was a challenge. Thank you. Do we have any action items from tonight's meeting?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any action items that we have logged down unless there are any added by council that we may have missed.
Okay, do we have any inquiries of staff by council? Okay, now we've got a short meeting, do you want a break, or do you want to roll right into? Let's get it done, okay. This meeting is adjourned.